Good morning and welcome to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting on this October 10, 2024. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: County Council Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board Andrew Giraki. Roll call Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Administrator Gary Schmidt, what's up first?
First is the Consent Agenda. It's a really long one today. That's a joke. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda. One, A, elected officials: approval of a previous business meeting minutes. B, finance: approval of a sublease agreement for justice court parking lot spaces with American property management. Total agreement value is $2,0716.80 for two years. Funding is through justice court fees and fines. No county general funds are involved. C, juvenile: approval of a personal services contract with the Pathfinder Network for cognitive behavioral skills groups. Total agreement value is $274,832 for three years. Funding is through Oregon Youth Authority and U.S. Department of Justice grants. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Andrew, does any Commissioner wish to remove any item from this Consent Agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second. Commissioner West has moved to approve the Consent Agenda and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please take the poll?
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Wee-haw. We are already at public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of the Board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes and comments shall be respectful to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for in-person testimony first, and I do have a couple of cards. Jason Ellerby, would you please come forward, state your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jason Ellerby. I'm an Oak Grove resident. Thank you for taking the time. I just wanted to talk about the two libraries, the Oak Grove one and the Gladstone one, which you guys have been quite heavily involved with. And I've gone to those libraries for a long time, and I'm very happy to see the Gladstone one is open and the Oak Grove one is coming along. One thing I noticed, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, the library is no longer open until 8 o'clock. It's only open until 7 o'clock. Me, as someone who often works till a little after 6 o'clock, and I don't personally own a printer, I've utilized that time to print stuff off and use the Internet and that. But it now closes at 7 o'clock, so that option has been kind of limited. I was going to say if there's any room in the budget to increase that time from 7 to 8 o'clock on those days, I think that would be a good idea.
Do you want to comment, Gary?
Sure, thank you. This is an operational decision I made. I conferred with you Commissioners about it, but we did reduce the hours of both the Gladstone and the current Oak Lodge Library. Part of that is budget-related. The operations of both libraries receives no county general fund. It's entirely the library district funds, which this Board has talked about many, many times. That tax rate was approved by the voters 16 years ago and has not changed, so the cost of business has increased while the revenue has not. But also, staff did a review of patrons who were using the library, and there are very, very few that were using it after 6:00 p.m. or 7:00 p.m. I know you are, but just looking at the, in general, people using the library. So it is a decision I made based on recommendations from staff. We certainly could revisit it, but it is a financial reason as well.
Okay. I mean, just, you know, we got this big new buildings, you know, well, not, the Gladstone one is not big, but, you know, new buildings and, you know, I just thought that would be helpful.
Aren't you really happy about the new buildings?
Absolutely.
I think they're fantastic, and what we're trying to do is make sure we're able to maintain those at optimum levels since they are new. And that was the reason for the staff decision on that. There's a couple Commissioners who would like to address this, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you for bringing your concern, and I can totally understand why that would be difficult for you getting off from work when you do and then still needing to run over to the library to do additional personal business. I understand that. Gary, is there ever an opportunity to look at, like, a day or two a week to be till 8? Maybe not the entire week all the way through. Is there some flexibility there where we can find a happy medium for those that do? Maybe those people that would come a little bit later could come a little bit later on a day or two? I don't know, maybe there's flexibility we can look at, but what are your, I don't know what your thoughts are.
We can look at all that again, of course.
Okay. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, well, thanks, Jason, for bringing this to our attention. I didn't know about your particular situation, but you're not alone. There are other libraries in the county. Canby comes to mind, where I've probably heard the most, and where they had to reduce even their weekend operations, where they're no longer open on the weekends, or Saturday or Sunday. So that gives the, and they close earlier than 8 o'clock. I believe it's 5 or 6 o'clock on the weekdays. So it gives the working people who have the standard 8 to 5 job really no real opportunity to use the library at all. They have to go somewhere else in the county to use, to get access to a library. We're aware of some of the financial constraints for some of the libraries around the county, and we're trying to work towards a solution and a work groups to address this. And it is a result of cost outweighing revenues, right? Inflationary times are putting a pinch on things. But those funds, voters passed in 2008, or the district was developed, and the Oak Lodge Library has been solely reliant on the library district funds, and all those funds are being utilized to the max. But we'll have to deal with this compression issue between, again, the cost outpacing our revenues. The tax rate is fixed. We can't raise it without voter approval.
Right, it's .39 cents per thousand, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Commissioner Schrader.
Oh, sorry, you done?
Yeah, I think that gets to it. I'm happy to have a greater discussion, but we're working on, we're trying to work on a solution because I really believe there ought to be a standard operating hours around the county, so that all Clackamas County libraries funded by the district have similar hours. It seems like a logical thing, but some libraries are really well-funded, and they get a greater share of library district funds than they really need. And that doesn't seem right when you have other libraries that don't get enough for what they need. So we need to work on that formula.
Schrader.
Yeah, one of the things I want to mention, too, is when we first did this district, we anticipated that our city partners would actually also be, you know, not just having the district money, but also helping to fund libraries. Now, I live in a community where libraries open all the time, even over the weekend, and that's Lake Oswego, but in their city, they have dollars in their general fund that also supplement what they get via formula from the district. And that's part of the inequality that we're seeing across the whole district, is that we have some libraries. And I got started in libraries because I helped expand the Canby library system back in the day when I was a young mother with little kids. And the library was in the basement of a retail store, and I thought, that's not working for me, you know? And so a number of us got together, and finally Canby was able to, they built their own library now, which is just beautiful, and they have their city hall also, you know, co-located there. But again, their issue, their issue is the hours. Now, they've got this beautiful building, but they've had to cut operational hours because the city doesn't have the dollars either. So you're right, Paul, it is unequal across the districts because some of our wealthier communities, like, and the two that come to mine are like Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, will also use, you know, city dollars. And we can't, we can't really expect all of our cities to do that. They all have different economies, some are rural, some of them are suburban. So how we, I think I agree with what Paul said, how we deal with this inequality across the board is, you know, maybe we need to revisit the library district. I helped run that campaign back in the day when it first passed. You remember that, Paul? And I, my attitude is, I think people will always vote for libraries because they are the bedrock of our democracy, and I've always said that. And you brought up something that I think is extremely important for people to know. Some people say, we don't need libraries anymore. You know, we have all this technology. But the bottom line is, there are people that don't have the technology and depend on the library to go in there, like you, sir, and use it, because that's what we're trying to do, is to make it available to everyone across the board. So anyhow.
Martha, thank you very much. And one other thing that I was going to bring up, also, when inclement weather and/or very hot weather has occurred, I believe the county has advertised these places as warming shelters or cooling areas as well?
Mm-hmm, yes. So the decision to curtail some hours at some of the libraries was not an arbitrary decision. It was, staff did a study and determined on usage. And so in the rural areas, some of our libraries, Malala, and I believe Sandy and possibly Essaketa, are closed on Sunday because nobody was using, hardly anybody was using the libraries on Sunday. And so that was a staff decision. But as we go forward, we'll have to revisit it. So the issue is, some of the cities who can afford to put a lot of money on their libraries, the cities that don't have it in their budgets don't, besides offering a building. So if you want to join the Library Committee when it's formed, the Citizens Committee, and be a part of that decision-making or process that we arrive at, you're more than welcome to apply.
Thank you, Tootie, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming forward. Up next, Les Poole. Please state your name and your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning Commissioners and staff and everyone. Les Poole. Yeah, I was involved in the library from way back when, and fortunately Gladstone had a good outcome. And the biggest reason that Gladstone had a good outcome is that residents got together and put a measure on the ballot that defeated the unaffordable Taj Mahal they were originally planning on building, on some property that has some clouded history. And because of a requirement for a vote in Gladstone, that project was turned down, and ultimately they came up with a much, much better solution for about half the cost. That was voted on and approved by us. So when you do something that's fiscally reasonable, as Commissioner Schrader said, folks are going to vote for it. And here we are, it's taken a long time, a lot of hard work, a lot of hurt feelings here and there, but it's coming together. I want to speak real briefly about transportation. Transportation controls future density, has a lot to do with the cost of living and available land, because when you build a right-of-way, you're also creating room for big pipes. Commissioner Savis knows a little about pipes and the ground and what they cost and what they mean. And when you go out to 172nd, I'll tie this together, Happy Valley has 172nd, and as most of you know, the growth out there is, and it's just amazing. So here we've got the Sunrise Corridor, which extends as far as 122nd Avenue, and the goal is to get the next segment down up to 172nd. But I fear one thing, I fear that so much focus on Happy Valley's growth and serving Happy Valley's needs in the immediate area will result in a project that's going to cost more and probably deliver less in the long run. And what I mean by that is the, so much of the grant money and the control comes from Metro. And Metro will want you to build a local connector out of this rather than an extension of the original concept of a four-lane expressway. And right now, that expressway is, obviously runs from basically Lawn Field at 205 out to 122nd, and it's working beautifully. But it all comes together at 122nd and Highway 212, and then it goes through the antiquated intersection there at 224 and 212. With the expressway completed, the Sunrise Corridor completed, that whole mess goes away. And I'll conclude by saying, you've heard me say, it's not about Les Poole and his car. It's not just about rush hour traffic. It's about preserving that amazing distribution capability we have out of Clackamas with the big stores, and there's so many big businesses. Warren Industries, one of my old customers, is down there. And their trucking and ability to get to Highway 26 and get out of there is critical. So let's watch real close and see what we get for a design on the Sunrise Corridor and make sure it's really going to work for everything and we don't get caught up with serving the immediate need, even though it's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Les. Just a little side note, just for the people out there, since 2020, Clackamas County has grown, population has grown by 24.8%, almost 25% in the last four years. And so you talk about transportation needs, they're very real. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify today? Seeing none, does Clerk have anyone online who would like to testify?
If you are attending virtually, I'll now ask you to raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Chair Smith, there are none.
Well, thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary Schmidt, you're up next.
Next is Administrator update. I'd like to share the good news of our county employees and the great work that they do. Today, I'd like to recognize Marla Consor, who works in our Juvenile Department as a program coordinator. She received the prestigious Program Professional of the Year Award from the Oregon Juvenile Department Directors Association at their conference earlier this month. Marla works with schools, law enforcement agencies, and others to keep schools safe and help young people get the support and services they need. And Marla was recognized by the statewide association. So congratulations and thank you, Marla. Next, our road crews in the Department of Transportation and Development did another great job, this time not potholes, but fixing a road that had an issue. And a member of the public from Wilsonville wrote in to us, "The dip in Eilers Road," is that how you pronounce it, Eilers? "The dip in Eilers Road has been filled, and I want to thank the road crew at Clackamas County. It's so nice not to go over that dip anymore." Thank you to that comment, and thank you to our road crews for the great work that they do. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Up next is Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Savis, you're up first.
Yeah, talk about something a little bit different today. Yesterday, we cut the, or not cut the ribbon, we broke ground on the Hillside Housing Project in Milwaukee. And makes one reflect, at least been here since 2011, when I first learned about the project and learned what we were trying to do there. And it just goes to show how long it takes to get stuff done.
Oh, yeah.
And though it's not built, it certainly, we certainly broke ground on it yesterday, and I appreciate frankly the story that was shared by the Mayor of Milwaukee in that, you know, and also Mayor Gamba, former Mayor Gamba, who recognized that the reason we couldn't move forward on in 2014, 2012, was not community acceptance by the city of Milwaukee, members of the city of Milwaukee. And they took that on, and I just want to just give a shout out to both Mayor Gamba, former Mayor Gamba, Mayor Beatty, for all their work and leadership, and the city itself trying to put that all together to what they got community acceptance to make this project go. You know, the unfortunate part about it is, is that all those years led to a lot of inflation, and the cost of that project has gone up considerably, just like everything else. But the fact is that we broke ground on the first phase, which is, or the first two phases, which is 275 units, and to be followed by an additional phase of another 225 units. So there'll be a total of 500. It is the largest housing number unit project that we've ever done, and a lot of great work. That was really a great opportunity yesterday to learn some of the history and see some of the partners and the great staff on everywhere, state level, here at Clackamas County. I just, it was a nice, a nice day to recognize all the good work and efforts, but also how long it takes and what community input or not can help or hinder a project, and this is one that we finally got off the ground. But that was great. Just got out of a meeting with the Association of Oregon Counties, got, finally got acceptance today in the meeting to add the complete what we started on the HB 2017, so AOC accepted that principle this morning. So that's been approved, a little bit of verbiage changes, but for the most part, good discussion. What also came to light is that I heard a lot this morning, I've heard a lot often, this was originally this, or that was originally that. And, you know, so I realized, wait a minute, I'm probably the only one who's still around back then, so I would say, well, actually, originally it was this. You know, so their memory of what original is, is not the same unless you have the full context. And certainly a lot of things happened before I ever got involved, so I don't have all of that. But, you know, attrition as people, elected officials come and go, you know, we end up with some, we end up with a lack of institutional knowledge. It just seems to dissipate. And what some people get on a city council or a county commission, and they've been there for a few years or five years, isn't the same level of experience or knowledge of how things came together. But the fascinating thing was, not just on the transportation, but all the other things that were discussed, it goes back to legislative tweaks that people don't remember.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And we, as we always jokingly say, you know, we always, we're always nervous when the legislators in session because they make these tweaks, and sometimes there's consequences, unintended consequences, that were not factored in to the formula or whatnot, and not dissimilar to the library discussion. The formulas, the formula for the distribution of those dollars to libraries, or the formula for, you know, what population would be served by what city, and the cost of that, they're not really thought out very well. So it's really the math, right? But all to say is that there's, somehow I wish we could better capture across the board, you know, the history, the reason why things came about, and reasons why what legislation passed, or what a county or a city did or didn't do, and why we have these hiccups. But all to say, experience helps, also fresh ideas and new people help as well, so it's a mixture. But just want to just say that for those around, if you've been around a long time, God bless you all, there's not enough of us.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Well, I don't really want to totally go down memory lane, but I was here when the Clackamas County Coordinating Council was pretty much nonexistent. I think it was before you were a Commissioner, Commissioner. And I remember then that the cities were very, very unhappy because they never actually really liked our community planning organizations. And then, of course, we did, you know, in the rural, you know, in the unincorporated areas, and then we even went a step further and did the Hamlet Village Concept, which really got them riled up. It took about a year for Judy Hammerstein to talk to me again, and the Hamlet of, out in their way, has been a burr under the city's saddle for quite a long time. But, and I remember once I was semi-ambushed by the city folk, and I had to stand up in front of them and say, "Look, folks, our job is not just to represent you as our colleagues at cities, okay? We have to, because you have a constituency too, and you are our friends in governance. But we also have to, we also represent large, unincorporated areas that we, in some ways too, we become their mayors in a sense." And that leads me to a quick conversation that I had yesterday at the opening of Hillside Manor with, oh, Mayor Beatty, and she said, you know, "Will you guys come back to the table?" And I said, "Well, I'll be talking to my colleagues about that." And this is the issue that we need to be talking about, is the district, the parks district that we're having, because the institutional memory there is very large and deep. And one of the things I want to talk to Mayor Beatty about is that when we rebuilt the entire complex, the county's dollars from general fund, I believe, I think it was at least 3 million, Paul, wasn't it? We built an entire softball complex where kids today are actually playing, you know, A Level 1 softball. We also built an entire natural area there, and it was a very, very controversial project because we had folks surrounding that park who, one person in particular who said it would be too noisy, too many lights, da-da-da-da-da, and tried to stop it. But we forged ahead with it, with the district, and as a result, now we have a world-class park there with a ball field that is kind of one of the best in the county. We also helped build the ball field, or did the ball field, that we then subsequently sold. I still wonder if that was a good decision to the North Clackamas School District. I think it is. They've been able to manage it, but that was also a county. So I guess my point is that it really doesn't matter if you're in the city, out of the city, whether you're a school district, whatever. It's the value of the partnerships at the table that we should be working together for good governance, because we're all in the same business of supplying service to our citizens. And as I said, my attitude is, I will be as, and one, I had the unincorporated area got mad at me once, saying, "Well, you've said you've helped support your cities." And I said, "Sorry." I didn't quite mean it that way, but I do. So I think it's a lesson in collaboration, how we move forward with things, and that we sometimes put barriers in front of us that maybe really aren't barriers at all if we can just all calm down a little bit and sit at the table and keep the eye on the prize, which is how we all best serve our constituents together. I think that's an important thing, and that's what Hillside Manor, because I was here when Chuck was here, and that was just a North Star at the time, that we were going to do this, and we were going to increase that capacity there. And Tootie, you were here too, one day when we were starting to talk about that. The other thing I want to mention, I had an opportunity to be with Senator Meek yesterday from our state legislature, and Senator Wyden, who did a town hall at Camp Withacum. It was very, very interesting. It got a little controversial at the end because there was a lot of talk about geopolitical politics, particularly Israel and Gaza, and those kinds of things that are happening here. And it was fascinating to see how eloquent Senator Wyden was with this. And I did have a chance to thank him because he and Senator Merkley were the two senators that helped us get the $4 million for Hillside Manor. So from folks from us to them, we were able to thank them for that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, this was fascinating to me, and I'm sorry I'm talking too long, but, oh, well. oh, well, there you go. So I recently read a New York Times article, and I thought of Ben immediately, because it was on the issue of marijuana, and how it has nationally become a total, total mess.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Now, you might think that you, I get, I get hit sometimes, and some of my more conservative friends, ah, liberal rag, but this was not, I, I will bring this article into you, but they really laid out the whole issue, that marijuana isn't what it used to be. Growers have increased the kinds of substances and the growing of it that actually are more damaging to people. There is such a thing as marijuana, you know, use syndrome, or whatever, where people start to lose focus, and people that are smoking frequently throughout the day start to lose focus, loss, they lose function, and also one of the things that they've been tracking in the medical community, it seems to be causing an uptick in schizophrenia, particularly in young people who are using this to the point where it's, you know. So I just wanted to mention that, because I think we're, psilocybin is also going to be on the ballot, and I know that we have been on that, and here's the issue, it's not that we are thinking that these substances couldn't have pharmaceutical properties, it could be helpful to people who are ill, it's the fact that they're in the political arena with people who have no medical or research backgrounds to assess, to see how they could be properly used. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, you cannot look at a pharmaceutical ad, all right, on, on the TV or anyplace else, unless they list, right, every negative, am I right, Ben? Every negative thing that could happen if you take this medication, okay? So anything that has a pharmaceutical effect one way or the other, I think needs to go to the, through the federal process, so we understand, because the New York, the point of this article was that this is damaging people's lives, and now, and the scientists that are working on it are saying, we've gotten way too ahead of ourselves. Don't mix pharmaceutical policy unless you have the, the science behind it, unless you can adequately list what the negative effects are. And colleagues, I'll get you that article.
Good.
And make sure you see it. So thank you, that's all I have today.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. Another reminder, 2 November is the Fort Kennedy Gala. Tina Kennedy and her staff are working very hard to support veterans in our county who need a little help, and please join us on 2 November for a great time. Visit fortkennedy.org and get your tickets today, please. Look forward to seeing you there. On the general election on 5 November, I've had some questions here in the last couple of days, where is information on the state measures? And just as a reminder, you got your county voter pamphlet, but the state pamphlet, that hasn't come out to everybody yet, will contain the information on those very important state measures that you need to read before you vote. Also, you might have heard, motor voter is shut down by the governor due to problems with that system, registering people to vote who were not U.S. citizens. So if you need to register to vote, you're going to have to do it at the clerk's office, or you can do it online, but do it now. The last day to register to vote for this, 5 November election is 15 October, so do it today, don't wait. Also, because of this motor voter problem, and the number of people who were registered to vote in Oregon who were not citizens, many of our residents in the county are very concerned about voter rolls, and so I urge you to contact your state representative and ask for a complete independent audit of the state voter rolls as soon as possible. On energy, we see states on the west coast in particular, our neighbors California and, and Washington, passing laws that are going to reduce the use of petrochemical and natural gas, and is causing an extremely expensive situation for those states, and now Oregon is doing the same thing. We've seen some cities restrict the use of natural gas in new construction, and if you haven't heard, the Mollum County has filed lawsuit against Oregon's largest supplier of natural gas, and they're asking for $51 million in damages, and 1.5 billion to cover what they consider future damages. And I just remind you that should lawsuits like this fly, every one of those dollars that is paid out in a lawsuit will come back to your natural gas bill, no doubt about it. So be very careful. Again, we all want a clean environment, but we also need a strong economy, and natural gas is one of the critical energy sources we use in Oregon and in Clackamas County, and it needs to be preserved and utilized. Until such time, technology comes up with a situation that is better than what we have now. But we cannot, we cannot have frivolous lawsuits restrict and harm our economy in this state or in this county. And on the humor side of life, yesterday, Trump came to Sandy, Oregon. Trump is now at my house, and he's living in my garage. Trump is a seven-week-old orange tabby with a bad attitude, and my fiance, Oksana, now has three kittens, and she is absolutely delighted. But so far, Trump has only scratched a few people, and we look forward to him behaving a little bit better in the future. Thank you very much.
And that's a red cat?
Orange.
Orange, yeah. Perfect.
Leave it to Commissioner Shaw.
Bring the humor.
Thank you.
Commissioner West, you're up.
Um, thank you. Um, one of the highlights I had this week, which was the first that I've had of its kind really since being a commissioner, is I had a meeting, the American Jewish Committee, the AJC, requested a meeting with me. I wrote an article that was published in The Tablet, a Jewish magazine back east out of New York, and so they reached out to me, and they wanted to have a conversation about antisemitism in the northwest, in this specific west coast region, which I believe currently is rampant and like nothing I've ever seen in my lifetime. And I think we've all seen the evidence of that. So the, the AJC is not a new organization, they've been around a long time, they stand up for Israel's right to exist in peace and security, and they confront antisemitism, no matter what the source is, where it comes from, and what form it decides to rear its ugly head. They are very strong in upholding democratic values, they're nonpartisan, and they want to unite Jews and all their allies, as, as we confront this, this, this ugly, I think, problem that we're all seeing. Yeah, we also just got past October 7th, which I think is clear to say that that was their 9/11 in many ways, in some ways worse. We all know how brutal that was, and we don't need to talk about those explicit events that were horrible, that were, that happened in, on October 7th. But we have, it, it really is the worst attack on the Jewish community in the state of Israel since the Holocaust, and we're trying to just now deal with a lot of antisemitism in the West. Here, we find people, I, I'm grateful to be, to be able to live in, in a Western nation, where I know I could, my family could exist just as easily here in Oregon as it could in Israel, but anywhere else in that region of the world, my family would be stoned, thrown off a roof, or our existence would be threatened, but not in Israel, because they share a common value system with the West. And so they wanted to talk to local elected leaders about, how do we work to address this? How do we make sure we have a culture that makes the Jewish people feel safe, and that they belong and respect it? How do we work with our campuses to make sure kids can get to class? People have their First Amendment right, we protect your First Amendment right to say things that are horrendous, and even things I disagree with. The First Amendment protects ugly speech, not good speech, that's why it exists. There's a reason for that, and we use debate and discourse to avoid conflict. We use our words and our reason to come to reasonable solutions in a civil society. So if I disagree with you, and you want to support Palestine on a college campus or in our streets, that's fine, you have the right to do that, but you need to obey the law, and the Jewish citizens, they need to make sure that their civil liberties are protected, and that their existence is recognized as valid, and that they're welcome in our community. And it was such a sobering conversation with the AJC, it was collaborative, and there's future conversations to figure out how local governments beyond just a resolution can be aware of these situations and watch forward as leaders. Maybe it's figuring out really good policy with Clackamas Community College, with Jewish, Jewish students, to make sure that everyone's civil liberties are protected along the way. Maybe it's working with law enforcement to be more aware, maybe it's partnering in different cultural events within the Jewish community, and being more aware and collaborative, and part of what they're doing, and having that relationship being trusted and strong. And maybe it's using our elected voices to push back against such hate and evil when we see it, because we have platforms. I'm going to do that, and I think what we have seen happen, where we've seen protests against the Jewish people, is goes far beyond policy discussions, it is really dehumanizing, and I, I think it's evil and awful, and I am proud to stand with the right for Israel to exist, and for the Jewish people to feel safe in our community and belonging. And so it was an interesting conversation, I look forward to future ones with them, you know, they, they want to know, they see us as a bright spot in the Portland metro area, where other counties have maybe not taken such a strong stand. And I, I let them know that we, I, I, I did speak for the board that we reject antisemitism, and that we, and we support the right of Jewish people to feel safe in Clackamas County. Had a really amazing meeting with Senator Woods, we're talking about deflection, trying to, he's, he is one of the senators here in Clackamas County, he covered all of Wilsonville is in his district, a big chunk of the, the western part of the county, so we talked about deflection, we helped bring him up to speed with the situation, the concerns that we had, he was very receptive of that, he couldn't believe that $400 million had no public process, like a rulemaking process to work on that algorithm. $400 million has no public process on how the money is spent, an unelected board makes that decision on a broken algorithm from a broken piece of legislation, or, or ballot measure dictates that from the org, from, out of OHA. So we talked about that. I met with Brian Cosgrove, and had a really great meeting with him, and our relationship with Wilsonville, they were very appreciative of the roundabout that's coming in on 65th and Ellingson, and other projects that we're doing around there, so that was a really good, we got a chance to catch up. One thing, Hillside Park was great, I am not going to repeat everything that my other fellow commissioner said, but one thing that did come out of it that did bother me, I'm going to say, one of the elected officials made sure to put a dig on natural gas. Hillside's all electric, there is no natural gas there. I wonder, I don't know why that is, that was before I was here on this board. I, I don't want there to be a culture, we don't give energy choice, and when that, we demonize natural gas in Clackamas County. We've made a lot of statements about this in the past, even formal letters to the legislature. I want to make sure that we have a good partner with all of our energy providers, we want to make sure that we have safe, affordable, reliable energy and choice for our consumers. And I'm concerned a little bit about some of the rhetoric and really good events like that, that I felt like would have been off-putting to large utility players in the region, and I fully agree and stand with every single statement that Commissioner Shaw, Shaw just said about a frivolous, ridiculous lawsuit coming out of Mollum County. They should focus on actually managing their local government, and getting into fights regarding, with utilities that they can't win, or that, and, and focus on the things that county and local government should be doing well, which they're not. So I, I agree with Commissioner Shaw's comments, and I want, from, I, I just want Northwest Natural Gas to know, I think they've been a great partner in Clackamas County, and we see them as a valuable partner as we build out and develop more in this region. And we've been having some conversations as we go into election cycle about voter rolls in Oregon. There's some conversations rumbling right now, I believe in Clackamas County, around this topic. I've learned, and maybe I should have known this, and I, as an elected official, and so maybe a lot of Oregonians don't. So if you were one of the 1,500 individuals that they just found, and more is trickling out as they, they, they realize that a lot of non-doc, illegal aliens, or migrants that were, are non-citizens that were, that were captured through motor voter, if they turn around and register, and they check the box that says, I attest that I am a citizen, they can now register to vote. So actually, all of those people that we just heard in the news, if they were to turn around to the Secretary of State and fill out a voter card, and they check the box, I attest that I'm a citizen, they can vote. There is no verification to the, to saying, to checking that box. You have to prove the negative, we were talking about this, Gary, somebody has to actually prove that they are breaking the law, but there's no birth certificate required, there's no requirement that you have the sacred right to be an eligible voter in Oregon, you just have to check a box. It feels like in Oregon, we've made it really, we want everybody who can vote to vote, that is absolutely essential, but we've made it super easy and broad for people who don't have that right, and shouldn't be on our rolls to influence our elections. Did you know that in the last 10 years, I believe in Clackamas County, three elections were decided by a coin flip? So you say, oh, we only have 60 of those 1,500, or 70 of those 1,500 in, in, in Clackamas County, well, that could decide a school board race, that could decide a county commissioner's race, races can be very close, some races are decided by a game of chance. And when we don't take our right to vote so seriously, that you need to make sure that you have the moral and ethical right to do it, we invite those to be on our voter rolls that shouldn't be. We allow it by being too broad, and by not being protective of that sacred right in a reasonable manner, while also allowing the most people possible that are eligible to vote. I'm concerned about that statute, that anybody can just check a box, and it's basically an honor system. You, I don't know who's verifying, it just looks like nobody's verifying that. That's a concern, we're called an attestation state, is what I learned this week. So people should, media needs to ask the question, so is it not true that every one of these people that we just learned on voter order, that, that were concerning, and, and we believe were undocumented, if they turned around, and they turned in the form and just checked the box, now they're in? Is that all that it takes? Like, to vote in Oregon, I'm concerned. I hope that we take a critical eye and look at our own voter rolls in Clackamas County, as we have had issues in the last few election cycles, that I believe have not entered trust with our electorate, even here locally. So that is all I have, Chair.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, we had the groundbreaking for the redo of Hillside Park, adding currently 100 homes to there, and we will be adding five times that amount, up to 500. It was an idea that the board had when I was the commissioner last time, and I brought that forward, and I'm, finally, like you say, it takes forever. Well, we had to get HUD approval from the federal government to do this, and this approval, and this approval, but I'll say this, on other speeches, Clackamas County was lauded as the example to follow in the region for doing housing. Thank you very much. And it did not come from our mouths, it came from a HUD official, it came from a state housing official, and the construction people love working with us, and I just want to thank our staff for being very good at promoting the board's goals. We are oftentimes talk a lot up here, but we, the best thing we can do is offer leadership and passion, and then we leave it to staff to do the how. Thank you very much for that. Ann Leenstra, our sixth housing, housing member, was there, and I talked to her, and she was one of the residents that were moved out, and moved into a new facility to, so they could tear down the old, and she was offered to come back, and I says, Ann, are you going to come back after the new houses are built? And she says, no, why would I? I'm in a brand-new place, it is gorgeous, I have my own washer and dryer, I have this, it's a two-bedroom, I don't know why she needs a new two-bedroom, maybe somebody lives with her, I don't know, a two-bedroom, and I am so happy right there, it is just wonderful. Why would I want to come back? I know it's new, but I'm happy where I am, besides, I'm 85 years old, I don't want to have to move again. So she was just very complimentary of the process and everything going on, because I know that was an issue with us to make sure when we move residents, that they were offered what they needed to be successful. I want to give you an update on the Supported Housing Services, SHS tax redo that I've been talking about. You might want to mark your calendars for October 17, next Friday, the Metro Council will be taking a vote. And I can tell you what I think I know so far. And I can tell you what I think I know so far. And I've given this board briefings and the public briefings, but this is what it is today. Could change. I don't know. Supposedly, there has been a behind-the-scenes agreement made that the tax reduction now, going for now, will be a 10% reduction. And I have told folks before that, you know, it could be as high as this, as high as 30%, but for now, it's 10%. So, for today, going forward in the next couple of years, I think Clackamas County can absorb the 10%, and so can the other two counties. But this is the issue. The governance model, what they're proposing is a big fat problem. And I said that from the very beginning. If they want to reduce the tax, adjust it for inflation, oh, on a side note, if they had adjusted it for inflation in the ballot measure, those people making $125,000 that are taxed, that income level would have been raised to $140,000. That's the impact that inflation has had on our wallet and on indexing, when you do indexing for taxes. Just a side note. There's a major problem, I believe, in that a nonprofit wants a seat at the table in dictating the governance model to the counties. And I have said no to that. I have fought that. And the problem is this, I'm going to be as honest as I can. The other two chairs will not comment on the governance model. They have said no to everything. I have commented on the governance model with the help from staff and listening to you all, that if taxpayer money is collected in Clackamas County, taxpayers pay it, then the Board of County Commissioners, your elected representatives, decide how that money is going out. But that's not what it's at issue. They want to create this whole regional housing authority. And they want to dictate to us, the nonprofit here together wants a seat at the table, they're taking the money, they're profiting, they're paying their staff, and they're going to tell us how to do it. You know, folks, I have to throw down the gauntlet on that. And I think I need to be as tough as we can on that. And we will see next, you're going to love this, next Monday night, I'm having a dinner with Lynn Peterson and the two other chairs. And I have encouraged the two other chairs, you have got to make comments on this governance model. Saying nothing will not work, as you've heard the expression. You know, if you're not at the table, you're certainly on the menu, and they're going to be eaten alive on this. So, if this does happen, commissioners, we're going to have to do some deep, deep, deep thinking and seeing how we're going to rebut this. I have an idea, but it's not going to be good. Commissioner Savas.
Thank you for the update, Chair. So, is the, you mentioned the 10% reduction in the rate. Does that mean that the sunset's still in place, or is the sunset going to go away?
Well, this is interesting.
Because if the sunset goes away and it's in perpetuity, that is an increase.
I said that.
A substantial increase. 10% over 10 years, just one year, one year with inflationary aspects, is an increase.
Oh, I've said that, and you're right. And I forgot to say something. I'll let you continue. But by year 2030, that will be the entire 30% tax reduction. Okay, so 10% this year and maybe add another 20. So, by the time the tax would originally sunset, it would be a 30% reduction. But I think they're going to ask for an extension next May in addition to this.
An extension of what?
The sunset.
To the voter.
To the voters. In May, I think they're going to ask for an extension to the voters. They're going to ask that it can be used for sticks and bricks. And what was the third thing, Gary? I'm blank on that anyway. So, the argument from the other two chairs is, "Oh, you're going to allow us to use the money for sticks and bricks, you know, to build infrastructure and our housing." But if it's a 10% reduction every year, and we get up to a 30% reduction by 2030, there's not going to be any money left for sticks and bricks. So, I think if we had to make the side between building a facility or offering services, I think that's what it's going to look like.
Exactly. That's where they're headed.
Okay, so you make one decision or the other. And, you know, I like tax reductions. Make no mistake, I support this, but we can't give away everything to get a little, in my opinion. Paul.
Yeah, just to say again, if it's been, if it ends up on the ballot and posed as a tax reduction, and yet the sunset goes away, then it's not a tax reduction at all.
That was my very first meeting.
And I really, I really think that, I mean, since I asked, if they're going to discuss it next Thursday, which is the 17th, who's going to, are you going to testify before the Metro Council? Because I'm also concerned that maybe the messages that are being discussed in this group are not making it backed in full comprehension by the council or even us, right, as we're learning and, right? So, it's natural. That's why that roundtable request and the agreement, yeah, we'll have the roundtable. Well, if you do the roundtable after you decide, it's, what's the point?
Yeah.
Right? So, I, again, I, someone needs to go there and testify. I've, I just looked at my calendar. I'm packed, but someone's got to go and testify on this.
I am too. I don't think they've noticed the meeting yet. They haven't put the public notice up there to know for sure that we're doing this. I think they're going to go ahead and vote on the 17th.
I think they're just going to put it out.
I will know more after the Monday night conversation. And if there's anybody that want to volunteer for that, I'm open-minded.
Let's bring it back on Tuesday.
Okay, let's discuss on Tuesday. Gary, can we discuss on Tuesday? I can give a briefing if I know something. Commissioner West.
Couple of things. I think it's really weird and telling that they want to bring such an important ballot measure to the voters in a non-election year in May, when there's nothing else on the ballot, and most citizens won't actually, the turnout will be like historically low, and only the fringes will actually come out to the polls, because a lot of normal working people are going to be like, "We just had an election. It's not an election year." And so, unless you're like hyper-engaged on this stuff, unlike most people are, because they have normal lives doing a lot of other important, normal things, that's all you're going to hear from. So, you're not even going to hear from the electorate in a way that's meaningful. So, there's a strategy around it about when they want to bring this out to the voters, which is suspect to me. This county has a very sordid history with groups like here together. We won't, I don't need to get into it publicly right now, but I am highly suspect of doing anything in this county with that specific group and them having a larger role in this effort, or them at all dictating how or what we do in Clackamas County. We haven't needed much of their support for a reason. I'm very suspect and concerned by that governing model that includes them and increases their influence with these dollars. There's political reasons around that that are quite concerning, and Clackamas County should be very skeptical. And Commissioner Savas is right, that's not a tax decrease. And if we're needing to build out infrastructure, and we're going to reduce the revenue, but we see the cost of construction skyrocketing year after year, but we're going to reduce the revenues in which necessary to do this work, and we've proven nothing to the voters, and so, we're already going out to them, and they still don't have the numbers necessary with the millions and millions of dollars that they've spent, and they want to already make changes early on in the process and pivots. I just, I have a lot of questions, Chair. I'm glad we're going to talk about it Tuesday, but I'm getting a little heartburn on these reports you're giving us.
Yeah. Imagine my heartburn. And the May election was chosen for that very reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they want to scoot it by. They just want to slip it through.
Commissioner Shoal.
Yes, and we cannot forget that in 2020, when the Supportive Housing Services measure passed, it did not fly in the portion of the metro taxation boundary that lies inside Clackamas County. So, the people that did vote for it, from Washington and Monloma County, their expectation was that from 2021 through December 2030, 10-year period, that the counties in the region would make significant progress in solving homelessness and other housing needs. And so, based on my best estimate, over those 10 years, the Supportive Housing Services measure, as it's currently taxed, would bring in and tax the people some $2 billion, $2 billion. And that's a lot of money. And the people who voted for it expected the counties to be able to take that money and solve a problem. And so, if we're saying we can't solve the problem by December 31, 2030, and we're going to need more time, the people who did not vote for this, who live inside the taxation boundary of metro, are going to be not just a little bit upset, but extremely upset. So, my recommendation is, don't mess with it. The voters gave us till the end of 2030 to fix this, and let's just bloody well fix it, and then not have an expectation that it's going to continue past the current sunset. Thank you.
To your point, Commissioner Shoal, I'm not so sure Washington County voters would approve it. So, if Washington County and Clackamas County can form together, there is a possibility of defeat in this, because remember, in Washington County, it originally only passed by 52%, and the economy was much better then.
Okay.
And Clackamas County voted against it. And so, there is a possibility, it's going to take one heck of a lot of politics, let me tell you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I think here's my concern with this, is that we went to the voters with one thing, it did not pass in this county. And I told the here-together people and some of my more dear friends who were on board with this, I didn't oppose it, but I didn't support it either. And largely, that was because it cut out our rural areas, and we have just as many homeless issues in our rural areas than we do in our urban areas. But it passed. And I thought it would pass with the other two counties, but I was pretty clear, knowing our county, it was not going to fly here. So, that's the pass. But the issue is, it passed, and we have been doing such outstanding work with it. I don't see any real tangible reason why we have to change it, because what I keep hearing is, "Oh, it's because the metro housing bond ran out for the sticks and bricks." But we also have opportunities for monies from the federal government. That's what HUD is for, okay? We have a housing authority that's been doing sticks and bricks for years. We have a good relationship with the Affordable Housing folks. And the whole purpose of this at the time was because they were finding out unless you gave wraparound services to folks, okay, they weren't able to stay in their housing. And I think that this is a loss of focus, and that's what worries me the most. We said we were going to do this. I think that money needs to be put towards that end till 2030. And if you want to get more sticks and bricks, why don't you do something, I think, that was more straightforward, and that is, well, then put another sticks and bricks bond on it. I don't, I mean, I don't think that you really should, you know, and that, of course, I don't think that would fly with our voters here at this point either, to be honest. But what I'm trying to say is, this whole purpose was to provide these services. So, to change it now that we will have a deficit in the dollars we were anticipating, to me, is just, doesn't make any sense, really. Let's do what we were said that this was meant to do, and then let's work collaboratively and to find the sticks and bricks. And as I said, I do worry that this is moving towards a regional housing kind of thing, and we don't really need that here. We have the oldest housing authority in the state of Oregon, and we've just demonstrated our success yesterday with Metro's help. Why would we mess? I guess my whole underlying argument is, why are we messing with success? I feel like they're taking defeat from the jaws of victory. I don't know. It's like, we're doing well, let's just stay the course. That is what the most clearest, most directive that we have from our constituents, and to change it is just, I don't know. I did talk to Christine Lewis the other day. We'll probably have a talk over a cup of coffee.
Good. So, anyway. So, you know, when you talk about HUD, HUD's rules are that the counties will not engage in a regional housing authority, or we would lose all funding from HUD.
Yes, thanks. Great discussion. Need more of these. But, you know, the, coming off this morning with getting an AOC to have the theme of finish what we started, or you could also rephrase this, finish what we promised, I would apply it to this, right? We put it to the voters, the voters said yes, granted, one county, this, two counties, this, that. But the end of the day is that finish what we started, right? We promised to do this. There was, by design, it would sunset in 10 years, and if we were doing a great job, you shouldn't be worried, because the voters are probably going to support it if they knew that this program's effective. You're taking that lever away, right? And you're also taking away the incentive to perform away from those who are not performing. Now, the other problem is, there is a mindset. There is a mindset out there that is housing first, right? The housing-first model. And those who are here, or remember what the implementation plan is that we approved in 2020, I believe, there was basically population A and population B. Population B are the people that are on the edge of homelessness, economic, so forth. And population A is more the people that are chronically homeless. What we've learned, okay, and not just here in Clackamas County, but of course, we're close to it, so we understand, what we learned is that there are people that refuse the housing. Right? And if their mindset is to take those dollars and just build more housing, they are not recognizing the reason and what needs to be done, the gap to make, to help those people that are homeless, right, who are not going to take the houses, no matter how many you build. What they need is recovery, behavioral health, all those gaps. And this measure, and they're, let's call it a fix, given the benefit of the doubt, a fix, isn't going to remedy any of those. So, you know, it's on the pretense that we got it solved, or we have the answers, and we don't, they don't have the answers. And take what we've learned and fill those gaps, not tweak it.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for your comments. I appreciate it a lot. We have managed to take a business meeting with two consent agenda items and run out an hour and 10 minutes. Now, Gary, that has got to be a record.
Yes, Chair.
See, no further business before this commission. We are adjourned.